Good evening and welcome to the May 11, 2023, meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Brodsky. Rothman.
Here.
De Placido.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Weingrad.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Zepone.
Here.
Carswell.
Here.
Spiegelman. Bo.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
Bowman. Vice President Veighi.
Here.
President Hecker.
Here. Thank you. Please note that Commissioner Bowman is excused. Commissioner Brodsky will be arriving a little bit later, and Commissioner Spiegelman is expected to join us via Zoom this evening. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I do not have any announcements this evening, so we will move forward for the public comment on matters that are on the agenda this evening. Are there any residents here this evening that wish to speak to the matters before the board? If not, it looks like we may have at least one resident on Zoom who wishes to speak to the agenda.
Ms. Lehman, you're unmuted.
So one of the items on the agenda tonight is Commissioner Thompson's leaving. And on that note, I'd like to say, we would like, as residents, to know when someone new has been appointed to a position, when someone's leaving, and what the parameters are for replacing that person. And in many cases, we have people that are brand-new. We don't meet them. We used to meet them in the township. They came, they were introduced, their credentials were talked about. And these days, we have had such a change-up of personnel in the last five or six years that it is almost confusing to know who's in charge of what department and what departments there are. And so to know who's in charge of Public Works and who's in charge of, you know, basic things, and to see these people. And I'm wondering why they don't come to meetings anymore. At one point, you took up half of the meeting room, even when residents needed seats, and you cordoned it off for the employees. But we don't even see them anymore. So we'd like to have more transparency as regards the personnel changes in this township, including with commissioners or anything of that matter. Thank you. Oh, two more things. I'm still on, right?
Yes, you're still on.
Yeah, so two more things. Just, you know, no matter how much we ask, we cannot get the Zoom link to be put separately instead of the middle of a big hunt paragraph. Again, you know, just incessantly. I had people calling me saying, "I can't get on. I don't know where the link is." Why would you refuse to do that? It just doesn't make any sense. And then also to have a phone number that people can call, so they know who to call if they can't get on. So that is right at the beginning of the meeting, or during the meeting if they're having trouble. I don't understand why you won't make those basic accommodations. So will you please, Mr. Hecker, care about the people in this township and listen to the things that they're telling you that are confusing and fix them? Commissioner, I'm hoping for an answer, because that's another thing we have a problem with, getting answers. I mean, it's really, really dangerous to have a township where the people who are in charge of your health, safety, and welfare will not answer you.
Thank you for your comments.
Oh, my God.
If Mr. Thompson is resigning and moving on, we should meet the person who's going to take their place, because there are not enough voices heard here. And you're showing a lack of transparency when you refuse to answer questions. It makes me suspicious after a while.
There is a process, according to the First Class Township Code, that we must follow, and we will follow. That will happen after we accept Commissioner Thompson's resignation this evening.
So we'll get to meet him and talk to whoever it is?
There will be a public process, which we will explain.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Tobin, you're unmuted.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, who is replacing Thompson, and will that person also be the Chair of the Comprehensive Plan, or will that end up going to somebody else? And just to second Laura's comments about, there should be a call-in number, so people could call in like a conference call. What if people don't have a laptop, or a phone, or whatever, and, you know, an iPhone, or whatever, that they can't get on Zoom? There should be another way. And putting together a call-in number is not that big of a deal. So I will second that. And there should also be, when questions are asked, there's got to be a way of having a question-and-answer period between, and I'm not sure if there's a process for that, or if that's something that needs to be introduced, but if that could, at some point tonight, be explained, what is the process to get a question-and-answer period during these commissioner calls? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. To answer your first question, we have no idea who is going to take Mr. Thompson's place, because the formal process hasn't begun, and we have not received any applications for that. And once the process begins, we'll have a better idea. And I'll explain further when we get to that agenda item, what the process will be. It looks like we have moved through public comment, and so we will move to the consent agenda, and for that, I turn to Board Vice President Matt Veighi.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I move for passage of the consent agenda listed as Items A and B. And I so move.
Second.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda passes. We'll now move, we have no unfinished business this evening, so we will move to new business before the board. And once again, I will turn to Board Vice President Matt Veighi.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item is Letter A, BOC-02-051123, motion to adopt Resolution Number 23-006, affirming a township procurement policy. And I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions from members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is Letter B, BOC-03051123, motion to advertise traffic safety ordinance number 2206, amending Chapter 156 Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2 Traffic Regulations, Section 14 Stop Intersections, Section 18 Vehicle Weight Limit established in Article 3 Parking Regulations, Section 25 Parking prohibited at all times. No parking between signs, no parking here to corner, prohibited except certain hours, no stopping or standing. To add stop signs on Huron Avenue southbound at Cypress Avenue and northbound at Jenk Town Road, Lawrence Avenue eastbound at Huron Avenue, Roanoke Avenue eastbound at Huron Avenue, Creft Field Avenue eastbound at Huron Avenue, establish a maximum weight limit of six tons on Washington Lane between Township Line Road and Wingcoat Road, and add a "No Parking Here to Corner" sign on Rossiter South Side at Fitzwater Town Road. And I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Does anybody want Commissioner Veighi to read that again?
No.
Are there any comments or questions from members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is Letter C, BOC-04051123, motion to appoint Patricia Gallagher, Stephen Sikavich, and Anna Nicolades to the Shade Tree Commission for a term ending on December 31, 2027, as included in Exhibit A. And I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Commissioner Veighi?
Just like to recognize Ms. Nicolades and Mr. Sikavich is here in the audience tonight. I know these two have worked as volunteers for the Shade Tree Commission for years without the official appointment, so very excited to see your promotion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Thompson?
I just wanted to recognize the work of Ms. Gallagher on the Comprehensive Plan Development Team, and congratulate her on her continuing on with the Shade Tree Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you for your service.
Next item is Letter D, BOC-05051123, motion to adopt Resolution Number 23-007, approving an intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the Township of Abington and Upper Morland Township to allow the use of the Upper Morland Township Board of Code Appeals and authorize the Township Manager to execute the agreement. And I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item is Letter E, BOC-06051123, motion to affirm the acceptance of $865,375 through the County Montgomery PA Pandemic Recovery Fund, and to approve the sub-recipient agreement by and between the County Montgomery, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and the Township of Abington, and to authorize proper officials to execute the agreement. And I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions from members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
And that concludes the new business this evening, Mr. President. You're just joking.
I was a curveball.
The last item is F, BOC-07051123, motion to accept motion to accept the resignation of Michael Thompson, Commissioner for Ward 6, effective May 12, 2023, and I reluctantly move.
Second.
This is a tough one. We will have an opportunity at the end of the meeting to honor Mike and his service, but I will ask if there are any comments that Board members wish to make at this time. Commissioner Bo.
I just want to point out that if we approve this, Commissioner Thompson's car is parked in a commissioner-only parking spot outside, so we have an opportunity.
Immediately be towed.
No, I, you know, one of the things that became really clear to me upon having the honor to serve on the board was that everybody brought different experiences and skillsets, everyone, all 15 of us. And I am not an architect. I don't have experience in land development. It was a gap that I needed to learn about quickly because of the particular items that were on the agenda. And I just want to thank Commissioner Thompson for all of the public comments that you've made and the conversations that you've allowed me to have offline about numerous topics around land development, in particular, that have allowed me to accelerate my growth as a commissioner, to be able to better serve the township. So in that sense, you've got a legacy in what you've taught all of us. I don't want to speak for everybody, but I'm sure we've all learned something, either through just listening to you or sparring with you about an idea. So thank you, and good luck.
Thanks, Bill.
Commissioner Rothman.
Not to be a lawyer or anything, but never want to miss the opportunity to point out when Bill was wrong. Mike, you can park there until the end of tomorrow, 11:59 PM, per this document. So giddy up.
Appreciate it.
Any other comments before we reluctantly?
What happens if we don't accept the resignation? Does he have to stay as a commissioner?
I believe, according to First Class Township Code, that after 45 days of inaction, it becomes accepted, whether we accept it tonight or not. So if we don't accept it, we buy ourselves 15 more days. Any further comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We reluctantly accept your resignation, Commissioner Thompson.
Sorry to go.
We'll talk more later, but I will say that now that we have accepted Commissioner Thompson's resignation, the First Class Township Code provides that we make an appointment into the role within 30 days. And so we will be soliciting interest from Ward 6 residents, and they will be asked to submit a letter of interest and a resume to a township email address that will be live either tonight or tomorrow, Commissioner Manager Manfredi?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Okay, so we will put that out there on the website. It will be available. And so we will, the material that we will receive will be part of the June meeting information packet. And prior to any nominations or votes, as part of public comment on agenda items, the public will have the ability to weigh in on what they see in the agenda packet. So that will be the process. Thank you.
And that actually concludes the new business, Mr. President.
Thank you, Vice President Veighi. We'll now move on to matters of the Finance Committee, and for that, I will turn to Finance Committee Chair Stuart Weingrad.
Thank you, President Hecker. First up is Item FC-01051123, motion to approve the March 2023 expenditures in the amount of $2,532,000, $2,532,112.52, and salaries and wages in the amount of $2,176,052.51, and authorizing the proper officials to sign in the payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of June 2023. And I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call vote?
Commissioners Brodsky. Rothman.
Yes.
De Placido.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Weingrad.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Zepone.
Yes.
Carswell.
Yes.
Spiegelman.
Yes.
Bo.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Bowman. Vice President Veighi.
Yes.
President Hecker.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next item up, Item FC-03051123, motion to adopt Resolution Number 23-008, to authorize and reaffirm the Abington Township Fire Department Length of Services Award Program, LOSAP, and set forth the funding source and procedure for funding the program. And I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
I'm going to ask Mr. McInenney just to quickly come up and explain what this is.
Okay.
I see around the township that we're actively recruiting people for our volunteer fire department, so I think this is something that people should know.
Certainly. Just a, I guess, a quick discussion about the Length of Service Award Program. It's essentially a defined contribution program for eligible members of the fire department. As a bit of background, I'm sure all you folks know, but maybe some of the residents don't realize, the Abington Township Fire Department is an all-volunteer fire department with approximately 230 active members. We run seven, average of 1,700 calls for service per year, about 20 to 25 active fires per year. The most recent one was about 2:00 this afternoon. We do about 25,000 hours of volunteer hours per year for the township, saving millions of dollars for comparable service if we had to have a career fire department. As I said a second ago, we have 230 active members while, and that's been steady for about 10 years. While other volunteer fire departments are steadily losing members, we have been, if not increasing, we've been maintaining, and the Length of Service Program is an integral part of our recruitment and retention process. And what it is, as I said earlier, it's a defined contribution program that provides a monetary award when the member who, if they remain eligible, at 60 years old. So if there's any questions about it, I can certainly discuss it further. But otherwise, I'd respectfully request that you pass this, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. McInenney. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
And that would conclude the Finance Committee agenda for this evening. Thank you, President.
Thank you, Commissioner Weingrad. We will now move to public comment on general matters of township business. Is there anyone present in the room who wishes to speak? Just please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. What kind of township is Abington? Abington is where billion-dollar corporations are invited to create unsafe conditions and blight. Raymour &amp; Flanagan has no outdoor maintenance service. They haven't had it in years. The policy at Raymour &amp; Flanagan is to allow the trash and garbage to move downhill. The dumpster is placed next to the incline. Overflowing dumpster trash goes downhill. Mr. Clark, why do you allow Raymour &amp; Flanagan to go years without daily maintenance service? The market has hundreds of customers every day. Mr. Clark, has Raymour &amp; Flanagan paid any fines for neglect and environmental blight?
Address the chair. Address the chair.
Abington is where commercial businesses have decimated curbs and sidewalks. The 500 block of Old York Road has decimated curb sides that continue for yards. It's been close to a year since Kim Hamm was quoted in a Times Chronicle article. Kim Hamm stated that she was in the process, almost a year ago, of investigating with the solicitor the path going forward with this area. Mr. Clark, this area has a bus stop. The pavement has no grass area barrier from cars. I don't want to see someone get hurt. There's no curb area. It goes directly into the street. Abington is where people come first, people come last, excuse me, corporations, real estate developers, and money go first. Abington is where, I'm grateful when a commissioner answers an email or a phone call, the majority of commissioners don't even do that. Abington is where speaking rights are reduced to three minutes once a month. Everyone is thanked for their comments and then dismissed. Abington is where residents are treated with scorn for attempting to hold decision-makers accountable. Also, I've been to the Noble train station. Somebody asked about it last month, and they do seem to have a depot for large vehicles running there for SEPTA. Is that true?
I don't know.
Well, somebody asked last month. They said that they have a view of vehicles parked in front of that area all the time because their house is located nearby. Everyone listened, and nobody said anything about why that was happening. And she waited, and that was it. So I'm asking again, why are their vehicles parked there?
I don't know, but we'll find out if that's true. I don't know.
All right. Hopefully, you will, because I'm still waiting for help with these areas, and it's been going on over two years with some of them. This is an area I've showed you before. The streets are again looking like this. Our islands have weeds growing in front of them, on top of them, in front of them, the broken-down look.
Ms. Cabell, I'm going to ask you to wrap up your comments. You're over time.
What is being done?
Manager Manfredi.
That will finally stop this. Don't tell me, please, it's not, send, please don't send inspectors twice a week to inspect this because it doesn't change. All right?
Ms. Cabell, thank you. Please take your seat. I'm going to ask Manager Manfredi to address some of the things that are actually being done.
Del, may I ask, have you spoken with Mr. McInenney specifically, and did he not email you about Raymour &amp; Flanagan in particular?
I have been told this meeting information for a long time. I was told that in, it said in the newspaper, I was actually told last July, that Ms. Hamm said she's talking to the solicitor about this area curbing over a year ago. It's going to be a year. It's not quite a year.
Let me be specific.
And now I see that they're going to, they're still looking into it, and things are going back and forth, but it's never addressed because these areas belong to them and should have for over two years.
So a few things I know I can address, because I know that, as I told you, we would, we did look into it. And I know that Mr. McInenney has been talking directly with Raymour &amp; Flanagan, and it was my understanding that he communicated that to you recently in a phone conversation.
I was.
And, so we are, in fact, reaching out to the corporate offices, and he did, in fact, have conversations with their general counsel and others, and have connected those people to the, to our solicitor. So with respect to the Raymour &amp; Flanagan property, we are taking steps and measures. With respect to curbs and sidewalks, there is a draft ordinance that has been presented in committee, and which will eventually make its way to the board, that addresses curbs and sidewalks, and the replacement thereof. So the point is, and I think the reason Mr. Hecker asked me to address this, is we are, in fact, doing things. In fact, and you have received answers.
No.
I.
I've been told.
We could show you, did you not have an email today? Did you not receive an email today?
Okay.
I've been told this area was being fixed a long time ago, and it stays the same. Why is it that Raymour &amp; Flanagan is allowed to have?
Ms. Cabell.
Also, they're allowed to have no maintenance, so it's only outside for years.
Well, you were just told that we are working with their legal counsel to address the matter. We're working with their legal counsel to address the matter. Ms. Cabell, I'm going to ask you to take your seat now.
I was told in this area, would it be fixed? I was told last year it couldn't be fixed. I was told it's still. And care of it, and it still sits that way. And there's a lot of that.
If personally means I'm going to go out with a trowel and fix that, no, I'm not personally doing that. But I am directing our people to take the necessary steps to do what we can do to fix these things, period.
There's a lot you can do that's not being done, because Target was fixed very quickly when there was a wall that fell down. But you waited for the wall.
Very different circumstance.
This is old, old plastics that shouldn't, you know, is this like environmental damage that's pretty bad, when you have old, old plastics with no lids on it anymore, and the wrapping is mostly gone?
All right, Ms. Cabell, thank you. Is there any other resident in the room that wishes to speak? Mr. Clay.
Hello. How y'all doing this evening?
Good evening. Could you just state your name for the record, please?
My name is George Clay. I live at the 100 York property on Township Line and Washington Lane. I'm just here to let y'all know that I have some issues. I sent Commissioner Weingrad some pictures of them tearing the wall down, the wallpaper down, and looking at that wall, and I have videos as well, it was mold completely gone from one end of the building to the other end of the building as they was trying to paint. Nothing got done with that mold, not wipe down, we ain't supposed to wipe down mold anyway, but nothing got done, but they painted right over that mold. When I asked last week about it, I was told it's a ceiling.
Say that again?
I was told that it was a ceiling, but that's not getting rid of that mold. People live down there, mold from one end of a hallway, about a broken elevator, all the way down to the one that actually works. It's been like that for years, since I've been there. Water leaks down there and everything else. We breathe that in, and now it's painted over, so you can't even see. Eventually, it's going to turn black again. It's a health issue that they don't care about. Second thing is, they did all that paint on all the floors, and I look like, not look like, but the word I'm looking at is, it looks like we live in a trash pen. The building is disgusting. It's nasty. Paint and stuff all over the floors. They did nothing. It looks horrible. I even asked about a leak that's in the basement that we walk through paths on every day. I've been asking for lights every time, put lights down there, garage door open, safety concern. I have family members, it was single women. We got a garage door that's been broken for months. Somebody just walked in, went to a bathroom, walked right back out, 1:00 in the morning. It's a safety concern. It's been like that for months. I've been asking, and asking, and asking. Nothing's getting done. I talked to Chris about the water leaks. I got, I sent. I talked to Chris about the water leaks, I got, I sent pictures, I have pictures on my phone, sent commissioner, pictures of all this water on the floor, nothing's getting done. Truth be told, and I'm being honest, I can't move nowhere, but something's got to be done. If the building is condemned, the building is condemned, I don't know about anybody else, I don't want the building to be condemned to get it fixed, but nothing is getting done to get this building up to satisfactory, somewhat. Um, I have one question far as handicap, making a handicap accessible. I've been trying to find out how to make, because they keep bringing in tenants that's in wheelchairs. I have a tenant just moved in, is in a wheelchair, he's on the first floor, he has to go all the way on the other side, roll by himself, all the way underground, to come up, to go to his apartment on the first floor, when we got steps, they're not, it's not handicap accessible, but you keep bringing in tenants that's in handicap.
Yeah.
We gotta do something, we gotta be better, do better, and I want to live better. I got, my son got two more years in Abington High School.
Let me ask the solicitor, Solicitor Clark, whose jurisdiction is around matters related to ADA requirements?
So, it depends on whether or not, the building during its renovation several years ago had to comply with certain ADA requirements, some that the township would have jurisdiction over, but some would be either the state or federal government. I'm not sure if I really understand what the ADA issues are, the ramps that had to be put in, the door handles that had to be put in during, during the renovation, that was something that we supervised, because that's what needed to be done during the renovation, but I'm not sure if I completely understand what the, the issues are right now.
Okay.
Yeah, we ain't got no ramps, you can't, there's only one entrance for, there's two entrances for the handicap person to go in. One is way on the other side, the other one is right on the first floor, but if they live on the first floor, they can't, and they got to go to their apartments, they can't go because there's steps all the way around.
I see, I see.
So, that's not feasible for them as well.
Here's what I found.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, that happens to me too. So, what I'll say is, let us look into this to see what jurisdiction we might have, and what the other opportunities are to address, if in fact there is something that is in violation of one of those codes or standards, and we will follow up with you, either Commissioner Weinberg or myself will follow up with you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Clay.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anyone else in the room that wishes to speak? And if, oh, Commissioner Zepone, that's fine.
Is that elevator going back in service, I'm saving it out, I'm going to start down? Is this building starting to back?
Currently, the 100 building has two elevators that are in service out of five. It has been that way for at least two months, they've been cited twice for this. The 101 Washington Lane building has two out of four elevators that are up, that is in compliance with our code. And then the amenities building has a, it's a stair lift or a chair lift, but it accounts as an elevator in our code, and that is not working, so they have been cited for that as well.
Okay.
So they're being cited, and they're just ignoring it?
Well, we're, we're waiting court dates on those right now. We have a court date for the end of this month on the 37 citations from a few months ago, but the majority of those were fire extinguisher violations.
Thank you, Mr. McInney. Okay, we will now turn to, Mr. Manager Manfredi.
I just want to, George, there are things that we have been working on, specific to what you've discussed, and I'd like to ask, you know, schedule something for you to come in, and with respect to the handicap issue, this, this was raised, and this was discussed, and Solicitor Lauren Gallagher specifically talked about this, and this goes back to how it was approved in the very beginning, in which option they took in compliance with the plan, which is what Solicitor Clark is referring to, and neither he or I have it committed to memory, but I do know that that issue was addressed, but we can certainly get the specific answers to, George. And also, we did, and we were on site for the treatment of what went on the walls, to treat it, which would be painted over. So what we will do is, we will verify that that treatment was in fact a treatment that will control and kill, so we could take measures to make sure, just to give you some peace of mind on that, and that's what we were just discussing, we will, we'll do that.
Thank you, Manager Manfredi. All right, we'll now turn to Zoom.
Ross, are you unmuted?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can, thank you. Just state your name for the record, please.
Ross Abel, I am a resident over on Upland. First off, I wanted to give a shout out to Commissioner Thompson for all your fantastic work on the comprehensive plan and otherwise, I've always appreciated your insightful efforts, and we will miss you. Also, shout out to Commissioner Siegelman for helping me salvage a door from the demolition on Susco Hannah, really appreciate your, your help with that. Onto my, my asks. First and foremost, 611 is still, and I feel like more so by the day, extremely unsafe for us pedestrians and families who live adjacent to it. And so I wanted to note that a lot of towns are looking at ways that they can pursue traffic calming on state roads like this, and in the current federal environment, PennDOT actually seems more willing to pursue traffic calming. They did studies for Cheltenham and Haverford, for example, so I would love it if the township could work with Jinketown, Cheltenham, and PennDOT to look into and study traffic calming on 611, because right now, we just, we're focusing on throughput of vehicles through our communities, rather than making our community actually livable for people to day-to-day work and live around this road. Specifically adjacent to Jinketown, I would ask that the township look at reducing the speed limit from 40 to 25, people can fly in into the borough, even though their speed limit's 25, and so for those of us trying to cross the street, it's very dangerous.
Mr. Fabel, can I, can I just stop you for a second, and we'll stop the clock?
Yeah, go ahead.
Manager Manfredi has an update in that regard.
Cool.
How are you, Ross?
Good, how are you?
So, I'm not sure if the word has gotten back to you, but I was speaking with the member of the Jinketown Planning Commission, and we are working on trying to schedule a time to get together, and your name, your name came up, and I thought he would have communicated that to you.
Yeah, yeah, this is Peter Wright.
That's right. So, so we are trying to figure out a best way to do that, we haven't even come up with a true plan, we just started discussions.
Sure.
I haven't even brought Commissioner Weinberg into the mix, and I know he's been talking with you quite a bit, so we want to, so that is in the works, is my point.
Awesome.
So we are already working toward that, and, and I think, and I'm not sure if you knew, but SEPTA, with respect to the question that was asked earlier, I believe aren't, isn't SEPTA intending to permanently move their engineering operations away from Noble prior to the bridge project?
Correct, yeah, and, yeah, so, so the, yeah, the engineering trucks, we heard the plan is to move away from Noble Station in anticipation of the bridge project, but we did hear that PennDOT's going to use Noble Station as a lay-down yard, so we'll get to have lots of fun with the bridge project.
Well, as that project moves forward, we will be able to be in communication with them and know what's happening, so it might be better if we communicate, feel free to reach out to my office, and we can administratively keep you appraised, so that, so you don't have to wait once a month to, to deal with it.
Sure, I appreciate that. Awesome. Okay, the additional things just related to, to speed limit, I would love to see the fairway reduce the speed limit, for, for those of us walking adjacent to the fairway and using the bike lane, the speed limit, I believe, right now is 35. Risk of severe injury drop drastically when speed limits are 25, and so if you really want to make a pleasant community area to, to use, limiting it to 25 would be great. And then last, I will just ask that the township pursue some grants for sidewalks east of Jinketown, similar to the Abington-Jinketown Connections Plan, but I would love to see more of these communities getting connected with walkable space, rather than walking on the street, which is very dangerous, of course. Thank you.
Thank you for your suggestions.
Laura Lehman, you're unmuted.
As usual, I almost can't even believe the stuff that I'm hearing. I'm hearing, Raymour &amp; Flanagan has been before you, before this entire board, what, for two years, a year and a half, and we have, we are kid gloves on, they still have the exact same trash on their property, and you're talking to the manager, not just issuing a citation and a fine of $1,000 a day that will clean it up within a matter of days. Do your job. We have laws in place, and we have people in charge who are literally babying the people who are blighting our township with the goodwill of the manager. This manager must go. Mr. Manfredi, the things that I've heard just in this meeting are stunning. You had all that information about the mold and everything else, long before. I sent it to you and to Ellen I and asked for an answer, absolutely nobody had answered. People's lives are in danger. Mold for somebody with asthma can be life-threatening, and there are other complications, people who don't have asthma can get it, and it's behind the walls, it's not just in front of the walls where everybody could see it, but you heard how devastating it was in front where everybody could see it, and you saw that, because I sent it to you, and literally behind the walls where the pipes are breaking, and running through the ceiling, and dripping down through the light sockets, and I sent that to you. You have done nothing. The 15 people on this board that leave this manager there to leave people's lives in that kind of danger, the law that they just passed said that electric has to be replaced when it's been wet. Well, there should be a permit for almost all the electric in that building, and Mr. Clark knows it very, very well. Mr. Clark fought to have a Level 1 for the renovations on that building, which would include not going behind the walls to do the breaking pipes and the electric, and all of you should be ashamed of that behavior. It is just stunning to me to hear this in public. I, I can't even believe that you're not embarrassed to say it. And we have, we have two people in code enforcement now who had full-time jobs, I'd like to understand how their full-time jobs are being done while they are now, you know, again, we don't, we still don't have enough code inspectors to go out and take care of the code.
Ms. Lehman, please wrap up your comments.
Really unbelievable, this is truly unbelievable tonight. The 101 building has literally had no elevators for a good deal of the time, and Mr. Clark knows that he could have put an amendment in with more than two elevators, but he didn't, and people's lives are in danger because of that. The elevators that are there, they have to take, even if they sound like they're dragging metal, even if one of them has dropped somebody down the floor, or a floor and a half.
Ms. Lehman, thank you, your time has expired.
Trevor Lee, you're unmuted.
Hi, my name is Trevor Lee, I'm a resident of Abington, I live on Old York Road, I'm also a member of the Jinketown, Abington Neighbors Association. I am, I just want to support the township pursuing a park at Noble Station, and also the plans from the transit-oriented development from the Noble Study for a walkable mixed-use environment north of the track. So, very much in favor of the park as part of the development of Noble Station. We understand that SEPTA is at 50% design documentation of their Noble Station redesign, which was news to us, and this was a meeting that we had with, we scheduled with SEPTA, a call that we had with them. This is where we learned, I was on the call with Ross, this is where we learned of the lay-down area that's being planned for the current parking that SEPTA's using now, which wasn't, we were excited to hear the parking was going away, but we didn't realize the parking was going away for a staging area, so, one, not very friendly use, be in exchange for another, but I think that's a later discussion, but I just want to make sure that, you know, I'm voicing my support for a park, which is much needed at Noble Station. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nora Salzman, you're unmuted.
Hello, good evening, again, Nora Salzman, I live on Upland and Rodman, someone earlier mentioned the lady who faces the train station, that's me, I want to confirm, yes, that has been a parking situation for SEPTA, and sort of a, like, construction debris area, so I was very happy when Trevor organized that meeting with SEPTA, and we heard, although it's not officially confirmed, that those trucks are all moving, I just want to encourage you guys as our advocates for the township to try to be proactively engaged with SEPTA, as they're about to see this huge change with the bridge that is going to really impact a lot of residents, and if we could be a prize, like, someone said to Ross of some of the changes, and we could have our input, and hopefully your advocacy for us, so that we're not so negatively impacted with detours and staging areas, because it's a multi-year plan.
Yes.
So I really hope you guys will help us proactively stand on top of that, and try to stake some sort of claim for the township on that area, you know, with the park, with some other cooperative ideas with SEPTA, that Trevor has been trying to proactively engage them about, having your guys' support on that would be really meaningful and really impactful, and it'd be really appreciated. So I wanted to speak up for that, and Noble Station Park, and, and, you know, making that a nicer area besides just construction, trucks idling. And I also just want to second some of the traffic calming concerns that Ross has had, and the pedestrian-friendly things. We're a biking and walking family, and I'm looking at Old York Road right now for my yard, and I hear accidents multiple times a week.
Yeah.
My four-year-old calls them the bad boy racers, you know, it is like an intense situation, and I think there could be small steps that would have a really big impact on the quality of life and the safety of the residents here, so I'd really appreciate your attention and help on those things, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, yes, that makes sense.
Karen Milovich, you're unmuted.
Hi, how are you? I'm at 529 Berkeley, and I'm listening to everything that's going on, and there's two previous speakers talking about parks and things like that. I do have a quick answer to what they're needing, and it's to not overdevelop and destroy the community. We already meet the transit-oriented district guidelines, we're 98, and probably right now at 100% occupied. This is why we have too much traffic, we have too many people, and we're bringing in more to add to the chaos. Also, we're talking about health. The average health quotient per hospital bed per citizen, you should have 1 to 2.4 hospital beds for 1,000 citizens. You, we are virtually between Abington, Holy Redeemer, and Deans, you have 1,000 beds, that's it, possibly 1,100, possibly 1,200, and that is just counting Abington, it is not counting all the other counties, Jinketown, Bucks County, all of the Northeast Philly, all the other people that are using these hospitals. Please look at the Google ratings to see how there are lots of issues where people don't have enough space, services, or goods, and this, all of this overdevelopment is destroying our community. I know there's several attorneys sitting here and our board of directors, I just, or our commissioners, I'm sorry, but I do want to say, the decline of the, of living for your, for your citizens is just markedly going down. The other thing you're doing is, if you The other thing you're doing is if you don't balance private insurance with government insurance, you are going to tank all three of your hospitals, which probably, I'm believing, is one of your largest employers. So you will have unemployed people and a hospital that's not functioning. And you've seen it in Chester County. Doylestown just sold off a huge piece of their land, and the economy is getting worse. So, you know, we're talking about the environment. You want to be, bring in people out of an overdeveloped area, but not have anything that citizens need to be healthy. What are you going to do about healthcare? Are you gonna, are you gonna be able to find the funds to pump down a couple of other hospitals? Oh, where are you going to put them? Because you're more involved in putting apartments everywhere. And as far as SEPTA, SEPTA runs up Huntington Pike across the street from us, and they sit in the turning lane of the Huntington Valley Shopping Center, which is a disaster. I've asked time and time again, I've called Officer Freed. People point in and out of that shopping center, and it's where you go in to go to the Giant you can't see. Your, your site is totally cluttered by a bus that's sitting there idling and blowing carbon dioxide fumes all over. So please just stop this. We meet the transit oriented district. We don't need more people. We don't need, I mean, you're already hearing things from people. They have, they think like a park is going to help. It's not going to help if you're overpopulated. Nothing works well at over 100%, you know, really, unless it's a, a raise for money. But truly doesn't work.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Hamam Eldori, you're unmuted. Hamam, you need to unmute yourself. Hamam, are you there?
Move to the next resident, and then we can.
Lisa, you're unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Just Lisa Mallon in Meadowbrook section of Abington. And just to pile on a little bit more, in the comprehensive plan build out analysis, the draft plan, I should say, there's already proposed units, Redstone at Baderwood, of 244 units with an estimated new population of 407. So that's right along the fairway where I hear people are trying to make that a more livable environment. And then continuing on for a potential shopping center, infill residential developments. And it talks about another 297 potential units in Noble near where the Trader Joe's and Walgreens is. So that's in addition to the Redstone-Baderwood project. And then on top of that, the potential unit of 663 units at the Abington Town Center, where the target is. So we move here for the quality of life and the living environment and the safe neighborhoods. And I, I'm just not understanding when we're talking about parks, when there are plans here for additional apartment buildings in some of the same locations as these proposed parks. That's all.
Thank you for your comments. Let's go back to the previous resident to see if he's there.
Hamam, you're unmuted.
We'll go to Mr. Tobin.
Mike Tobin, you're unmuted.
Yeah, Mike Tobin, Kirkwood Avenue. And I'm just going to piggyback on what Lisa was saying, what Karen was saying. I think as commissioners, what you're hearing is people moved out of the city and out of the congested areas. They want some space in their lives. We don't want all these apartment buildings that everybody thinks is such a great idea. Our schools are not equipped to handle the influx of people, the influx of students that we would get. Our roads, 611, Huntington Pike, the roads are terrible. They're terrible, rush hour, you can't get by, it's, it's a mess already. And yet we're talking about building more, putting more people on the road. The, the, I'm sorry, somebody else talking?
No.
Okay. The, the pollution that that's going to cause, if we are truly concerned about greenhouse gases, adding all these apartments is only going to increase the amount of greenhouse gas emissions. I know in the comprehensive plan, there was a study by the Brookings Institute, I think that's who, who it was. And so the analogy that, from what I read, was it's better to have 300 apartments than 300 houses. Well, there's no room for 300 houses, so that analogy doesn't work. I also think the, when the, those community meetings were, were done, the questions that were posed were, would you rather see a, a four-story apartment building or a seven-story apartment building? Well, that's, that's a false equivalency. That's not, that's not an option. You're giving people an option, either a four-story or a seven-story. How about one of the options being none? We moved to this, we moved Abington out of other areas because we wanted the space. We wanted to be able to move around and things like that. I don't understand how the commissioners and, and how that comprehensive plan, how everybody can be trying to force all these apartment buildings that look like hell anyway, or built right, like, almost right to the roads. They look terrible. I don't understand how the commissioners would actually approve this comprehensive plan without listening to what the residents are saying. This, this plan, this comprehensive plan does nothing for affordable housing, nothing. It does absolutely, it probably works the opposite way. Because these apartments aren't going to be low income housing. As it stated in the comprehensive plan, the average, the average salary to be able to afford housing in Abington is close to $100,000. So, you know, the average price of a house is $300,000. That's not the affordable housing that people think that they're going to be getting. So this comprehensive plan, you're hearing it from a lot of people, this comprehensive plan is terrible. That's not what the people want. And as commissioners, you're supposed to represent what the citizens want, not what you want, not what the developers want, what the citizens want. So I just urge us all to slow down and make sure you know what the citizens of the towns, of the township want before you go approving this. Thank you.
Thank you. Manager Manfredi, did you wish to say something? On this topic or the previous? Whichever. We'll, we'll start with, we'll start at present. Mike, you may not have seen the ad or the notice yet for the future land use map. We are the comprehensive plan development team led by Commissioner Thompson that was comprised of volunteers from various boards and citizens in the community. And worked hard and long with the planner to develop a document that still hasn't been finished. And I think we mentioned this. For example, I think on the website right now, are dates being advertised for additional public input, specifically on the future land use map. As you may recall, there were people saying that we took this down and, and we were trying to hide it. Well, that's not true. We, we, we heard the comments by the public and their concerns, such as you're raising here this evening, and said, let's be more thoughtful about it. Let's, let's make sure. When I say we, I mean the Board of Commissioners and the administration on their behalf are planning more sessions, at least two, where the public will be able to share their views on future land use, specifically for or against whether it's the, the train stations or TODs or any other concerns that they have as it relates to future land use. And I believe the first session that's currently advertised is May 25th. So once that future land use input is taken from the public, the planners who, many of you who've been following the Recreation Park and Open Space Plan with Simone Collins, who will be, who will be leading that and will be pulling in that information and compiling it, then we'll have another meeting, and then it'll go to the Comprehensive Plan Consistency Committee. And it'll be, again, at that point, there'll be more public input. That's before the Board of Commissioners even receives it and accepts it for additional public input. So this narrative that it's completed, that it has, that the board hasn't taken into consideration what the people are saying is just false. So take advantage of the additional sessions specific to the future land use map and the various recommendations that came out of the Complan Development Team. Share your comments. Don't just share them here or at those meetings. Put them in writing, send them. We will share them with the elected officials that you're, you're talking with this evening. They will duly consider it. They'll be thoughtful in their consideration, and they'll think about all of this when they consider, when it's finally presented to them, it hasn't even been presented to them yet, the comprehensive plan. With respect to the other comments by the earlier commenter, again, as I've said countless times, I have, I will not defend myself against things. But what I cannot tolerate is the work that Mr. McInnany, who is a resident, who's lived here for years, who's been a volunteer firefighter, and Mr. Platts, who's the fire marshal, volunteer firefighter, are working tirelessly, not only on Raymore and Flanagan and 100 York, but on the countless calls that come in about high grass and other violations of our code enforcement. And, and I want to thank them every day for the work that they're doing, as well as Kevin Van Horn and everyone else in those. And as it relates to Raymore and Flanagan, they were cited in December. We are taking the necessary steps to do things. We have to go through, the government is not above the law. We are not above the law. We have to follow the law. We have to file citations, we have to go through the process, and we have to go to court. Thank you, Manager Manfredi. Before we adjourn this evening, I'm going to ask Board Vice President Matt Vehe to join me in the middle of the room. We have a little, something we'd like to share with Commissioner Thompson. Do we have a handheld mic, or do I need to use the? All right. Commissioner Thompson, we couldn't let this moment pass without publicly acknowledging your outstanding service, your dedication, and the many things that you've brought to this board during your time as one of our colleagues. And so I'm going to first ask Vice President Vehe to say a few words, and then we have an official citation that I'd like to read to you this evening.
So we have the privilege of working with a fantastic group of commissioners, and I respect all of you tremendously. But no one else is my running mate. Mike Thompson and I ran for the first time together in 2017. And then we were the only two challenged for, uh, two years ago. Through that, I mean, there's a, there's a connection you build with someone that you run with. It's, it's almost like soldiers going into war. You know, we support each other through political quagmires, and in the last year, some really personal challenges. You know, you're such a good friend, and we're going to miss you so much on this board. I mean, you're leaving a hole behind of knowledge that, I mean, someone better start studying, because I don't think anybody has the skills in architecture and land use that Commissioner Thompson does.
I've been studying the whole time.
But upside is, you're walking distance now, looking forward to having you in the neighborhood. And I know this is not the end, because you have too many talents to not be in service. So thank you for all you've done.
Thank you, Vice President Vehe. Mike, I share Matt's sentiments, and although we were not running mates, I learned a great deal from you during our time together. You were the go-to for things that, in architecture and land development, that none of us really understood on the surface. And you had an uncanny ability to translate that into language that we could all understand, digest, and then work together to make important decisions on behalf of the township. Your passion and dedication for making this community better is remarkable. And your leadership around the inclusive park is something that will be talked about in this township for years to come. So hereby, I'm going to read this. Whereas Michael Thompson was first elected as Township Commissioner in 2018 and was reelected to a second term in office in 2022 to represent not only the people of Ward Six, but all Abington Township residents and. Whereas Mr. Thompson serves as Chair of the Comprehensive Plan Consistency Committee, is a member of the Infrastructure Committee, was the past Chair and a member of the Land Use Committee, was a member of the Public Safety Committee, and is the lead commissioner working to build an inclusive park to benefit families and people of all ages and abilities. Whereas Mr. Thompson led a team of community volunteer on the township's comprehensive plan development team in developing the framework of the township's updated comprehensive plan, collaborated with law enforcement and citizens to strengthen our ordinance related to the lawful operation of massage parlors, and worked diligently with federal and state agencies and the township's water provider to improve drinking quality that was threatened by PFOA, PFAS, and other related contaminants. And now therefore be proclaimed this 11th day of May 2023 that Michael Thompson be remembered for his achievements and for serving the people of the Township of Abington with respect and care, and is herewith recognized by this formal expression of gratitude and thanks by the Township Manager and the Township Board of Commissioners of the Township of Abington. Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody on the board. It's been a real pleasure serving with all of you. We've had numerous conversations, some where we'd agreed on things and others where things were a little off, but we always came through it. We always worked together as a team. And I've treasured the last six years, working with all of you, working with our community, working with the residents of Ward Six. And this has been an experience that I'll, I'll never forget, and I will always treasure. And by the way, I'm not dying. I'm just moving. So I will continue to support and help and be involved with our community wherever I can be. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. We look forward to your continued involvement in the community in new and exciting ways. And with that, we will adjourn.